We ready? Hello and welcome to our regular South Salt Lake City Council meeting. It is Wednesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-five, and it's currently seven P. M. My name is Leanne Huff, and I will be conducting tonight. I represent District One. Charlotte Beinum is our council chair. I want to welcome residents and city staff, our sergeant-at-arms for being here tonight, and my fellow council members. And please excuse Paul, he's not going to be here tonight, and Mayor Cherie Wood is excused as she's doing some other city business. We will, I'll hand it over to Ray DeWolf to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Ray. Our next item is approval of minutes, but they are not ready yet, so we will bring them back at a later meeting, and so we'll move on to no action comments, starting with scheduling.
Yes, thank you. We just want to thank everyone that came out to the Fourth of July Freedom Festival Celebration. We had a great turnout. Some of the highlights of that event was a flyover from Hill Air Force Base during the flag-raising ceremony. We had hundreds, or at least, I don't know how many, hundreds of residents that gathered along the parade route, and then, of course, the epic watermelon drop at Fitz Park. We want to thank all city staff and the city council for making this event possible every year. And then coming up this Monday, July fourteenth, at six P. M., is another great opportunity to meet the mayor. There's an ice cream social at Fitz Park with free ice cream. So bring the kids and come meet mayor with Mayor Wood and city staff and your neighbors at Fitz Park. Thank you. Oh, sorry. And the next regular city council meeting is on the twenty-third at seven P. M.
Thank you, Ariel. We will move on to public comments. So anyone who have a public comment, please come up and stand at the podium. You have three minutes, and we just asked during the comments that we're civil and no personal attacks. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Susan Bolden. I live in South Salt Lake. This evening, I wanted to thank the mayor especially, and I'm sorry she's not here, and the other six elected people who serve South Salt Lake, plus everybody who attended the recent town hall at Granite Library. It was amazing and wonderful, and the emotion, you could feel the emotion for the things that people were caring about. So it was a beautiful meeting. All seven of them spoke about how deeply they care about big issues, including those affecting our refugees, housing, and more. Tonight, I have a request for our entire council. Will you please reinstate the moment of reflection we used to have at each meeting with a new focus? I'd like to hear about one of these two topics each meeting. First, I was impressed at that town hall, how deep the care is for our refugee people in our city. And I'd like us to focus specifically on what is, what the city is focusing on to keep our refugees and our non-refugees safer, and include sample ideas for residents to help and support each other. I have an idea that I'll share in just a second. The second thing I'd like to hear about is how our police department is handling ICE interactions. So rumors don't get started. I spoke with the chief at that town hall, and there was kind of a misunderstanding about what the police had done or not done when ICE was interacting with something that happened in our city. And I just think we need to know exactly what is happening and how it's being handled, if we could get information on that. And I meant to talk to you ahead of time, but I didn't, so it came too soon. Here's one idea that I got, and I tried to tag people on Facebook. Clarissa, I don't see your name on Facebook, or it didn't come up. But I think everybody else and Ray doesn't listen to his, so maybe nobody saw it. But I've, I found a particular place that is doing ideas for businesses, and I'm hoping somebody from our business community is here tonight. They say that there's an idea that businesses could put up a sign. They had it in a video, and the video moved fast, and the woman holding the sign, you couldn't actually see it. So this is the sign, what it looked like. She had her hand over part of it, because I made my own little Mickey Mouse one. So I do have a copy of the real sign. I just got it tonight, didn't have time to redo this, and I'll pass it around when I'm done talking, so you can share it. And I'm going to a training with this, this thing on Zoom thing tomorrow night, and I'm going to pass that. That's on the back of this when I pass it around. But what they do is they say that businesses could put up a sign similar to this, and I'm going to turn around so the audience can see it for a minute. It says, "Stop," and there's a hand there, and then it has, "This is a private space for employees only, no public entry." And then did a little bony Q. R. code, because that's on the original, or the real official sign. And that's for more information. But they say that if ICE comes to a business and they have that sign on their break room door, and in the little sample video they put online, they had what the person asked for two, one for the front door to it and the back door to it, then ICE cannot go into there without a judicial warrant, which means a judge has to sign it. So that gives some safety to employees, and I believe the incidents that happened here, one of them involved employees. So that, that could be a thing. I'm going to go to more trainings for this to try to get more information, and I'll share it. I can't find a whole lot of information about the, the organization. It's called Workers Over Billionaires, and it has another name, Organized Power in Numbers. And I've got that right here, and I, I think it's on this paper, I don't recall. But I, I think that if we had something like-
I just want to remind you, we appreciate this, but you are at times, so just-
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it, thank you. I was, I have hearing issues. So anyhow, I'm going to pass this up to you and-
Thank you, no, thank you, Susan, thank you. Thank you, Susan. Any other public comment?
I, I just wanted to ask real fast what the, sorry, date and location of the meet, meet the mayor event was? I didn't catch those, you and I only said that once.
Yeah, it's on Monday at six P. M. at Fitz Park.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So glad to be with you today. I'm Kim Welch, representing Granite Library, and I apologize, summer's a busy time, so I haven't been here, and I didn't make it here in June, but we do have a lot of great things coming up in July and August. I'm actually temporary filling in a position in our programming and outreach department, community engagement. And so I'm keeping up with what's going on at Granite, but I'm thrilled to hear that town hall at the library was a success, because I didn't know what happened, and I'm sorry I missed it. So my apologies there. We do different things in the summer at the library, which we really love getting to highlight, things when maybe families with both parents working maybe can't do during the school year. So one thing, on Wednesday mornings through the rest of July, we have Little Artist Storytime. So our librarian Amanda is highlighting different artistic picture books and different mediums in each of her storytimes. So that's Wednesday mornings at ten thirty. We also have a Maker Monday next, excuse me, not next week, the following Monday, on the twenty-first. And that's a chance for kids to get into our create space and learn some of the technologies that we have there. This one specifically is going to be making buttons and metal bookmarks on our sublimation printer, so they'll get to see how that works as well. That's from four to five on the twenty-first. And then early on in August, we have a couple of great things. Take Care Utah is partnering with us. They're going to be at the library on Friday, August first, from two to five P. M. We will have experts there to help individuals who need assistance for accessing and applying for insurance programs like Medicaid, CHIP, ACA, Medicare. So if you know of anybody who needs that resource, that's a great opportunity for them to get some free help. And then if you are gardening and you've got an abundance of produce and you want to learn a fun new way, or maybe a different way, to preserve it, we're going to have a summer pickling cooking demonstration. That is Wednesday, August sixth, from six thirty to eight thirty P. M. All right, and of course, don't hesitate to reach out if there's anything we can do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate the updates. Any other public comment? As I see no other public comment, we'll close that section and move on to city attorney, or not mayor, because she's excused, but city attorney comments.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay. And now city council, start, we'll start with Ray.
Sorry to miss the Fourth of July parade. I was on vacation. I didn't, yeah. And that's it. And I want an accurate count of how many people were there. If we can get that by the end of the night, that'd be awesome, thanks.
I guess I was, same thing, I apologize for not being there, just things happen in the last minute, so that happens, but I know it was the best thing it was supposed to be. And then just kind of my address, the social media stuff that has come through, is I personally am not back on social media, because I'm keeping my sanity. I can't do the news that's out there, but I did read the comments, and to anybody who's listening is that, let's verify sources first, and let's not point fingers, because what we don't know, we can't comment on. And I will not speculate, comment, or make any comments about anything I don't know that happened, because I'm not going to be the one to misspread information. So I just want to encourage everybody out there, verify the information first of all, because we get put into the hot seat a lot of times when they tell us, this is what your job is. What I can't do anything about what's happening out there, I don't know what's happening. And as far as tagging me, people have blocked me already, so if you can't, if you can't reach me, you probably block me. And then the other part of that is, just like I said, social media, I'm keeping my sanity, because there is a lot going on, and sometimes we need to separate ourselves. And that's something I'm doing to better myself, not only just for me, for my family, but for my communities, to make myself better, and that's it.
I also am sorry I was not able to attend the Fourth of July, I was stuck at work, so I apologize. Well, I did attend the Fourth of July parade. And I want to start off by thanking all of our staff and volunteers who work so hard on that. You just see all this behind-the-scenes stuff every year. But I do want to say, I know there were hundreds, because I ran out of candy at the end, and I apologize to the sad-faced children that I did not get candy to. I will do better next year. I thought I had that down, but I did not. So there were a lot of people, and there were sad children at the end. So, but thank you to staff and volunteers.
Nothing for me tonight.
I want to thank everyone, too. I did, I did attend as a supporter. Charlotte was in the parade, so I cheered her on, and every, everyone else, it was really great. There was a lot of great floats in there and representation of South Salt Lake. So yes, thank you for all the staff and volunteers that made it a successful parade again this year. All right, we will move on to information, flash vote survey results by Joseph Dane.
Good evening, city council. Joseph Dane with our communications and public outreach team. I think I did a brief headcount while there. It was a fantastic year, and I think every resident except for Ray and Corey may have been there. But it was hard as hell. It was, there's a lot of people. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to go over the recent results of our flash vote survey. And really quick, I just wanted to take this opportunity to do a brief educational background of what flash vote is and why we use it. It's a survey software. It is very brief. It's an opportunity to get our information feedback from residents. It's five to six questions, it takes one to two minutes, and we do a survey every three months-ish. And the, the point of flash vote is that it is a statistically relevant representation of our demographics, so it really does paint a good picture. We do these surveys, we bring this information to you and make it on, put it on public record for you to use in your decision-making process. So this, this one we did last month is on water conservation, specifically really asking residents how they feel about the current state of water. Are they taking conservation actions, and are they aware of the conservation opportunities and rebates in the community that we try to promote? It's not about providing water or the utility service of water. That is a little, a little different, a little more tricky. South Salt Lake is a bit of a patchwork when it comes to providing water utility service. When Salt, when South Salt Lake was established, our boundaries were from twenty-first to Mill Creek, so that is where the South Salt Lake Water Utility provides service to our customers. And then as we incorporated the, or annexed the incorporated territories of the county, those are, those customers are provided through Jordan Valley. So it, it's just an interesting thing. And then we have some, some carve-outs of Salt Lake City water providers from our residents. And I just bring that up, because when we talk about water, providing water to our taps, there are different entities that are involved in that. But when it comes to water conservation and the ordinance is that the council may pass, that affects all of our residents, regardless of where they get their water from. So when we're talking about and looking at these results, it really was more about conservation that affects all of our residents, regardless of where they get their water. So in total, we had a hundred and ninety-two participants that responded in this survey. And really quick, I'm just going to go over the takeaways that I took from this. I do actually step back. If everybody is not already signed up for flash vote, we try to do frequent plugs to get residents to sign up and keep growing the list. It, it's very short, and then you can go back when you sign up for an account and look at all the results. So I might be going over something you've already looked at. Hopefully you have your own takeaways from this, but please sign up if you are not already on flash vote. And just briefly, what I found in looking at these results was the majority of respondents support the ordinance that we, the council passed last year on prohibiting outdoor watering during land, during daytime hours. Majority of residents are actively trying to do their part to conserve water in some fashion. The majority of residents are in support of some sort of tiered water structure that really makes higher users pay more. And we do have a need to focus on education on water conservation to our residents. So the first question briefly, we went over, are you concerned about water in South Salt Lake? And it was interesting to see, and I did pull apart, there are filters that we can look at for gender, various demographics and districts, and this was a pretty interesting poll. It was pretty even, so there was nothing much to look at in terms of looking at the different filters. But the majority of people, forty-six, said they were very or extremely concerned about water. And as we know, that's very much a statewide and throughout the West, so no big surprise there. There were some people that are not concerned at all, which makes me wonder. Question two, are you aware of the outdoor restriction for daytime watering? Last year, the council passed this, and as a reminder, it was passed, because it was a, it was a requirement from the Jordan Valley Conservation District for us to get our residents eligible for the full three-dollar rebate for the landscape incentive program, in addition to just good water practice. So quite a few people were not aware of it, but overall, they were in agreement that people should not be watering their lawns during the hours of ten A. M. and six P. M. So this was an opportunity to remind them that this is in place, and they should not be watering during the daytime. Code enforcement still goes about this as a education, that we haven't had any enforcement, civil enforcements on this, but we understand there are opportunities to educate people about this ordinance. The fourth question was a little more about drinking water, as the cost of providing water, it gets more expensive. So asking them, what do they agree with? And we see that the majority of people here, seventy-four percent, are saying that excessive water users should pay, should pay more, followed by to meet the need, we should increase water rates a little bit each year. We wanted to see if people were, if there was a difference between raising rates in increments every year, or if we raise them on a more wider, wider frame. And then people who conserve water should be paying less. So it really is just looking at, if you're using more, do you believe you should pay more? And if, if it takes more to provide water service to residential taps and business taps, how should we go about making sure that our water utility is solvent, and we're not using the general fund? The fourth question was asking if people were familiar with the rebate programs provided by the state. It's actually state money that funnels through to the various water districts. We are a member agency of Jordan Valley, so that's where we push people to take advantage of Utah Water Savers. And interesting enough, I think everybody who applied for the landscape incentive program, applied for the smart control and the toilet rebate program, because it's all thirteen percent. But there is a, what stuck out to me is thirty-three percent didn't really know about the programs. So we really need to do a better job, not just the city, but Jordan Valley, and I think all cities in the state, of really educating residents around the state about the money provided by the state to help conserve water, whether that be through toilet replacement or a bigger impact landscape incentives by getting rid of grass. The open-ended questions are always the most interesting to read, that's where you get the, the good feedback. What I did briefly was just took like the first four or five, I thought I would read them, and then reply and respond to them. But I encourage you to go read all of them, there's some interesting information in there. So just looking at the top four or five, on the open-ended question five, a resident said, maybe don't award homes with high water usage for lawn of the month. And last year, we actually kind of changed our Beautiful Yard Award to focus on water-efficient landscapes, and it was one of our most successful Beautiful Yard Awards. We did incentivize winners, which really helped, but we're doing that again this year. So, and I believe we are the only municipal municipality that's doing that. There might be another one that I'm just not aware of, but it's a fun alternative and flip on the Beautiful Yard Award, which we have been doing for many years, so we are focusing on water-efficient landscapes with that program. Another resident said, we're probably using a lot more water because of all the apartments. Most single-family homes don't use an excessive amount of water. So I just want to state that actually, over half of all municipal water is used on outdoor watering and irrigation. There's actually a very small percentage of Utah's overall water that's used in indoor homes. So to that, I would say really our focus here is on making sure we're reducing our outdoor watering usage, and that's where those incentives come into play. Another resident said, I'm not sure what restrictions exist regarding watering midday, but if there are any restrictions, I would appreciate clear messaging and a way to report violators. So I, it falls on, on me specifically. We really want to make sure that we're doing our job. The council did pass the daytime watering restriction ordinance last year. We've been trying to actively monitor our message, rather, and we've been, we've handed out several hundred door hangers just as code enforcement sees violations and through an education component. And we do have an online form, the contact us form on our website, where you can report water waste, and our code enforcement will go and reach out to those, usually businesses, but also sometimes residents. And we have found that most of the time, they don't know, and they address the issue very quickly. And then one more here, homes in South Salt Lake that prioritize gardens, flower beds, and lawns should not be penalized for making where they live beautiful. Increasing water fees for those using more water will only make our city look worse and become more undesirable. And that is an understandable statement. I can relate and understand to that. But the Utah Water Savers is a statewide program, and every city in the state is grappling with water conservation. It's really not unique to us. I would encourage this resident, but really everybody, to take a Local Scapes workshop. It's, it's very eye-opening. It's provided for free through the Conservation Water Garden, and it talks about how there's a difference between functional grass and non-functional grass. And it really focuses on not getting rid of all of your grass, but getting rid of those park strips, the adjacent side lawns that aren't used at all, and making that a drip system, water-wise, and you still using grass, so keeping grass that's functional for families to play on. So it's not really about just getting rid of grass entirely. There are many, many examples of what this looks like at the Conservation Garden Park. You can go there, and they have examples set up for you. And that was essentially it. So any breeze through that quickly? It's all online, though, if you want to go read it for yourself, but any questions on this flash vote?
Any questions?
On the, going back to the information where I think you even did mention about how apartments, is there a way for apartments or even townhome complexes that can incentivize outside? Is there something in place for them? Because I know there is for single-family homes, but is there something in place that maybe apartments, townhome complexes should know about?
Most of that falls under new development, and that was a part of the ordinance that was passed. New development has a certain amount of ordinances they have to abide by. And I would say that most apartment users are, are in culinary water consumers inside their apartments. So there's not much to do. I mean, it might be different if we're talking about duplexes, fourplexes, that would fall under kind of that homeowner, how do we address the landscape outside if it's being wasteful? But for the actual residents living inside, I mean, some of the things I would probably mention are your toilets. If your toilet is older than nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-five, I believe, you can qualify. I'm sure you probably have to go through, if you don't own, through the landlord, but that would qualify for a free toilet. Checking your, checking your lines, making sure they don't drip, those sort of things. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
All right. Now we're going to move on to action items, unfinished business, item number one. Spencer Colley's going to talk about an ordinance of South Salt Lake City Council enacting Section seventeen oh three point one eight five of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to create a new housing and transit overlay district and some other amendments. We talked about this in the work meeting, too.
Yes, we did. Thank you, council, Spencer Colley, Senior Planner. Council member DeWolf to answer your question from the work meeting. There are twenty zoning districts. However, we do have sub-districts, for example, in the downtown, so we, that we have four sub-districts within the downtown alone. So we're also up there with the number of districts that we have, so. Just to jump back in, we are requesting that council take action on unfinished business, item number one, and then request tabling items two and three.
Just for the purpose of the regular meetings, since some people don't watch the work meeting, do you mind giving just a brief?
You bet. So the, the item for action this evening is enacting the Housing and Transit Overlay District. This is a district that will assist in the redevelopment of downtown. In order to qualify for that overlay district, there are requirements that we are including in the new zonings that will include a minimum of five acres, a minimum of fifty units per acre, and a minimum average building height of fifty feet. This does limit those types of developments, but with, if you can meet those qualifications, you can petition the city to rezone your property, and as part of that, you do have to enter into the city, or enter into a development agreement with the city. And the purpose of the development agreement is to really allow flexibility for these developments, to deliver mixed-use projects that we don't see already. And so the example that we are, really the driver for this is the Marcus Center Development, that it will be downtown, just south of the S-line stop.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any discussion on this? We did talk about it in the work meeting. And if not, I'll get a motion. Can we, do we need to do it on each, just on the one, and then table the twos?
Yeah, because they're separated into three different items, so action item number one, you'll make a motion to approve, or whatever your motion will be.
Yeah.
And then for the other two, just continue those separately.
I can make motions on, on them.
Okay, sounds good.
So on the first one, I'll make a motion that we pass and approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council enacting Section seventeen dot oh three dot one eight five of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to create a new housing and transit overlay district, mandating Section seventeen oh three dot oh one zero Amending section seventeen oh three dot oh one zero to add a new H D overlay district, land use category. And many portions of the chapter seventeen oh seven, many portions of chapter seventeen oh eight, and many portions of chapter seventeen ten. Which amendments further implement the new H D overlay district.
Okay, we had a, a motion by Ray and a second by Clarissa, um, we'll start with roll call.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Alright, that passes, thank you, Ray. We'll move on to item number two.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we move item number two on unfinished business to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we had a motion by Ray, a second by Charlotte. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Alright, with that moves.
And then I'll make a motion that we move, um, item number three under unfinished business to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Ray, a second by Clarissa, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Alright. Excellent, thank you. We will move on to item number four, resolution of South Salt Lake City Council. Authorizing the South Salt Lake City Police Department to dispose of unclaimed property in the South Salt Lake Police Department possession. And Tiffany will come up and talk about that.
Hi, I'm Tiffany with the South Salt Lake Police Department, I am here to request that we appropriate ten bikes. To donate to Free Bikes for Kids.
This is something we do every year, so very standard. So, yeah, there's no further discussion, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council authorizing the South Salt Lake Police Department to dispose of unclaimed property in the South Salt Lake Police Department possession.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Clarissa, a second by Cory, roll call?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
That passes. And now we'll move on to new business, item number one. Um, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section three point eleven point zero two zero of the South Salt Lake. City Municipal Code to modify general fees, and Ariel is gonna guide us on that one.
Yes, thank you, and I will just talk about items, uh, one and two together on the agenda, since they both are about the same thing. Um, so the first one for the general fees is just to clean up that section of the consolidated fee schedule. Um, we didn't have, uh, flash drive, USB drive listed on that list, and that's probably, uh, the. Media format that we use the most, um, when we're giving grammar requests. Aside from just emailing or giving them electronically, um, so we just thought we would just consolidate all those into one. And just call it a media device and, um, do the one fee, so that's that one. Um, and then on the second one, um, it's just for fees in the city recorder's office, and it just adds. In state code, they added a couple years ago, um, they allow for candidates to turn in their campaign finance. Uh, twenty-four hours late, if that comes up. Um, but we can charge a fee for that, so in, I think it's a fifty-dollar maximum fee on that. So we just decided to put that in our consolidated fee schedule as well. Um, and then just also change the cost of paper, um, records. We don't get those requests very often, but, um, we just up that from ten cents to twenty-five cents, um, per sheet, so. So that's what both of those are. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Just curious, how many sheets typically do you need to print when someone requests that?
Um, I don't get that very often, um, I did have one pretty recently, um. And it was probably, I mean, if I had to guess, it was probably sixty to seventy pages. Um, so, but we, I, I really don't get that requested very often, and we try to, you know. Have people do it electronically, it's easier for us and for them, so that's kind of why we charge that fee too, to just, you know. Encourage people to not waste paper too, so.
Thank you, Ariel, and we're okay to move this to another meeting, okay, so a motion to. Can we do one and two together?
I'll make a motion that we move items number one and two under new business to our next regularly, regular scheduled council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ray, a second by Clarissa, um, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, move those to a future meeting, and now we'll go to item number three. Under new business, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section three point eleven. Point zero seven zero of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify police department fees. And Aretha's gonna come and speak to that.
Hey, how you guys doing? It's my first council meeting, so. Um, I am here, um, from the South Salt Lake Police Department Record Supervisor, and we are wanting to amend. Our fees in regards to reports, grammar requests, and record services. Um, the reason being for the increase would be to account for the complexity of video and audio requests. Um, to accurately reflect rising costs, to ensure cost recovery and reduce subsidation. And to keep pace with industry and regional benchmarks. I can go into a little detail if needed in regards to all those, um, points I just gave, if you guys would like, or if you have any questions.
Quick question, Aretha.
Sure.
Pop quiz.
Oh, no.
Do, do you happen to know when the last time is that we revised these fees?
Honestly, I, it's been quite some time, I don't know the exact date. I mean, more than five years, I would say.
Okay.
Any other questions or clarifications?
I mean, maybe for anybody who is watching online, um, just give a breakdown quick if you want to. Um, cuz I think if we're not familiar with these fees, then it'd probably be a good idea to do it.
Sure.
If you would, thank you.
Um, do you want me to give what it is now and what we are wanting it to be?
Um, basically, probably just kind of like what the changes are like, if you have some for, say, like the videos, what does that entail? You know, is it cutting out portions of it, sections of it, what does that entail?
Yes, so as we now stand, video redactions are at forty-five dollars. We are wanting to change that for thirty minutes or less to be forty-five dollars, thirty to sixty minutes, fifty-five dollars. And then each additional thirty minutes, ten dollars. Um, that reason being, our body cam and dash cam footage is, um, time-intensive. Reviewing, redacting, exporting videos, um, it's time-consuming, takes hours, even for a short clip at times to redact. Um, so when privacy protections are applied as well, it just takes time in that regard, so it really makes a difference if we can. Not just have a flat forty-five dollar fee, but depending on how long those videos actually are, um, would help us.
How often are these video requests being made?
Quite often, I mean, daily, I would say, we get at least. Maybe ten to fifteen requests daily, um, just for videos.
Is this more like for court requests, or is it just like public requests?
Public requests, attorney requests, um, depending on accidents or, uh, situations that happened, you know, outside. They are wanting to see body cam, dash cam footage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, thank you, and we are moving this to a future meeting, or?
I will make a motion that we move this to our next scheduled council meeting. We're creating a lot of work ourselves, not next. And that's what I'll do.
Okay, we got a motion by Ray and a second by Charlotte, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Alright.
Thanks for your time.
Next agenda, thank you. No need for a closed-door meeting, so if I can get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Clarissa made a motion, Cory made a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.